Uh, is it in attendance? All right, and joining for the plagues.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, let's see, we got a couple items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we got an early action item. It is Teacher Appreciation Week all week long. I'll read the resolution and then we can have a little discussion about it. So here's the resolution dated 4/9/2018 for Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers, school counselors, specialists, and all licensed instructional staff mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in evaluating the children, educating the children of this community. Now therefore be resolved that the Silver Falls School Board of Directors proclaims May 7th through 11th, 2018 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that Silver Falls School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and their devotion to work. Okay, very good. So do I got a motion for passing this?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. I guess I'll start out. Wow, so I, that's what we're here for, is to put the teachers in front of our students. I'm married to a teacher that works in this district. I've got two high school students, and I've got one child at Scotts Mills, so I'm seeing it firsthand every day, I'm hearing about it most every night. And I can't, you know, I just, we just encounter them, you know, all throughout the district. I just couldn't be happier. I don't really have any prepared statements, but does anybody else have any thoughts to share?
Yeah, we have such awesome teachers in this district. I've been on this board since 2005, and my kids started school before then, and all threw their schooling in my experience from being on the board. We just, I think personally, I think we have some of the best teachers in the state in our district, and that's what makes this district what it is. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff that do awesome things for kids every day.
Yeah, and we have the new association president here, right? I can't, what's, Crystal Free?
Freer.
Freer, okay, very good. She's here to represent the teachers. So, excellent.
Ms. Chairman, you have a connection?
At least one from a couple other teachers in the office.
Oh, okay, great.
Looks like two.
All right, fantastic.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers. You know, they make such a huge impact on a child's life. I remember vividly that my first grade teacher gave me a compliment. I think it was the first compliment I had ever had, and it was for my penmanship, and to this day, I still, if I write too sloppy, I think of Mrs. Gordon. So it does make a lasting, you know, impact, so.
Following up on that, teachers make like a decision to compliment a child. I've read several articles where the average teacher makes four decisions per minute during their day. So it's a lot of stuff going on that teachers have to juggle, and hats off to all of our district teachers.
You know, I know we all have something to share, whether it was maybe your experiences a youth or a student, in our youth or as a parent, you know, with our children going to school, and I've got a son who's a junior at the high school. His name is Ben, and in his youth, and he was a handful, and he went to Evergreen, and we had Patty Potter, who she just knew how to handle my son, and she'll forever be part of our family. We're forever grateful for the entire staff and everyone that's affected our kids. They're much better for it, and we have a fantastic community, so, yeah, it's one big happy family here, nothing but love.
Yeah, I mean, I'll share, I guess I'll share another observation, listen to everyone else share theirs. You know, we'll go to a function at Scotts Mills, and then we'll bring, you know, families come with their kids that are going there, but then they bring the kids who have graduated, they're in high school, they're in college, you know, older siblings will come, and the joy they, they visit with all their old teachers, and it's just, the bond is there. They really made a difference, that they, they, I know my kids, and you can see the other kids, they want to come to, they want to come to the school to see their old teachers, and I think that's really great. That says a lot.
Well, to kind of piggyback on what Herb was saying, you know, out in the field, I run into a lot of former students, and, and, you know, the impact the teachers have had seems to carry on these kids. You know, you see them out there, and they overwhelmingly seem to be very, very productive, you know, doing really well, you know, well-adjusted, that kind of stuff, and you can almost just pick them out that way. It's kind of neat to see.
I'd like to make a statement the week of May 7th through the 11th, so I'll make a statement then.
Okay. All right, so, I guess, yeah, so we have a motion and a second, so let's have the vote. I guess all in favor for passing this resolution for Teacher Appreciation Week. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is our student representatives. I guess it's just Jory today, no Brooke.
I'm Jory Curtis. I'm here to represent Silverton High School. The softball team started off a good season. They've had a tough schedule, but they are two and three. The baseball, their season is also off to a great start. They are nine and two. The girls and boys golf, they meet today. They have a lot more kids out than usual, but they're having fun and doing very well. Girls and boys tennis, the girls have a meet tomorrow at Central, and the boys also have a home meet tomorrow again at Central. Choir is off to districts and league the next two days, and will be competing at George Fox and Willamette University. Track and field has a home meet on Wednesday, and another invitational meet on Friday, and they're all doing very well. Dance team placed fourth in state this year and did awesome. They did better than they were previously placed before state. ASB is holding the Mr. SHS competition this Saturday, and their goal is to raise over $33,000. Key Club is still tutoring after school, and they just started their fundraiser for leukemia lymphoma patients. Interact Club is finishing up their requirements to get their presidential citation. The Red Cross, Red Cross Club is planning on having another blood drive next month. The Health Ops Club is just getting kicked off and had a meeting, and they are planning on taking their members to visit OHSU. The New Spanish Club continues to work on their Spanish skills and has meetings every second and fourth Thursday of the month. GSA continues to do lessons on LGBT history, and they plan on going to the Oregon Clear Youth Summit event up in Portland. The Speech and Debate Team has state coming up, and they are sending 10 people off to that. FBLA just competed last week, and they did very well. They had three first and second place finishers, and many other in the top 10. FFA also had a state competition last month, and they did very well. They had four first place finishers and three placing gold. The NHS had their induction ceremony, and it went very well, and they continue to support the community through volunteering. And Theater just continues to practice their one-act shifts.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions for Jory?
Is Mr. SHS sold out yet?
They just, the bookkeeper doesn't have any more tickets. I'm not sure if all the guys have sold their tickets yet or not, so, most likely.
That's awesome. Very cool.
All right, very good. Thanks, Jory.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for our first audience with visitors. I'll read a quick statement for it. Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. We are glad you are here, and welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit the remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. All right, would anybody like to address the board? Okay, very good. Oh, pass the room. Oh, is there someone? Oh, please, come on up.
Wait, I did sign in, and...
Just state your name.
My name is Rob Chadwick, Silverton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I, first of all, I wanted to make a point. The, in the agenda minutes, I noticed since about October, there's been very little to no detail about the audience with visitors. So I appreciate that you can view the school board meetings online, but it would be really nice to have some record of the comments from people participating. And so that I don't run over the three minutes, I'm just going to read kind of what I wanted to share with you, and this is about student safety in regard to the district's dam inundation evacuation plans. So these are issues that I've raised with the city manager, Kristi Worser, and with Andy, and I wanted to follow up with the board and make you aware of my concerns. First, in the event of a dam failure, there is no evacuation plan for the high school. And I'll get into why that is. Second, the current plan for the middle school has kids evacuating to the high school, and that appears to be a result of inaccurate maps provided by the city to the district. So the city maps are, you may have seen the little one-page map that was, I think it was in our town, and it used to get sent out to residents. It's on the city website. It's actually missing the evacuation route for James Street. The detailed maps that were produced as a part of the inundation survey show the evacuation route as north from James Street away from where the potential inundation flood would come from. And so I did bring that up to the city, and they, I was speaking with Kristi, apparently the high school, and you can see this if you look at the study, wasn't evaluated as far as a point of interest, and in the maps actually shows it's outside of the flood zone. I live at 939 Western, which is, you know, one block up and half a block over from the middle school, and the, you know, it shows nine to 15 milliliter water coming through middle school, but it stops right at the stop sign on the corner of James and Western. So there were limits to the boundaries of the study, and Kristi has acknowledged that, and they're looking to update this thing. But, so, last I heard, the district was waiting for updates from the city. Also, in speaking with a couple staff members, there, as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been training or information at the middle school as to what to do in the event of a dam failure. So I wanted to ask the board to follow up with the district, if you could follow up with the district and the city to make sure our staff and students are safe, and, and review the district's staff and training program for that. And I have, I can leave a bunch of information. I have pronounced some explanations of the discrepancies within the maps.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I'll take them, just give me a hand here.
So it seems obvious to me that if there's a problem with the maps, we ought not to be evacuating the kids in the direction of the flood, and ought to follow the findings of the more detailed stuff.
Right.
So that's all.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on. Okay, discussion item. The District Policy Committee recommended revisions and deletions. Section J, Students. This is our second reading. Sarah Weisman sent a good email, I haven't had a chance to, with some thoughts that I like, but I, thoughts that I wanted to look into, but I haven't had time to look into them, but does anybody else have any, anything they'd like to look into? Any questions?
Well, I printed off the email and just highlighted the policies that she had questions on, and I pulled those particular policies from that section. And I, I didn't quite get through the whole thing because I need, I wanted to take more time to look at what was, what law was put in there. You know, they have the legal references at the end of the policy, so I didn't have time to look at all of those laws and how it went into those policies, and what was the separation of the law and what the languages that the district put in. So I'd like to, I'd like to have more time.
That's why we have to read.
To look at these, yeah, exactly. So I just wanted to share that as well.
Tom, I have a question about the equity policy that's in there. It's indicated proposed. Does that mean when we vote on it that that's included or not? Because I thought that we had kind of put that on the table.
Yeah, we did, maybe Ann could clarify that. What was your thoughts on?
Yeah, that was actually in the OSBA proposed policy that hadn't been pulled. So that was a good find by Sarah, that, I mean, it would have been pulled had we, had it been approved, or had we reviewed, or when we reviewed it prior to approval. But, yeah, there was an entirely new policy, revised policy, that we had two readings on, and that's been set aside. So that policy would be pulled.
All right. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Next up is administrators and staff reports. First up is Andy to talk about school safety and security plans.
Yeah, I wanted to just take a minute to, because it's timely with upcoming budget conversations, and some recent conversations that you've had as a school board related to school safety and security, and some of this is repeat information, and it'll generally be brief as a result. But first of all, we are putting together plans. I see Lauren's in the audience tonight. Lauren is helping with this as well, as well as the technology department for the district, putting together plans, so we have point-of-entry control devices at each of our schools in the district, and plans together for that. Buzz-in systems, camera systems at each entry within the system, and putting together figures, so that'll be a, an item for consideration with the 17, or excuse me, the 18, 19 budget. We're also putting together quotes for additional fencing in the district. As I shared with each of you, we've completed the central house fencing, the latest in a series of fencing projects that we've completed in the district, but we still have a few more to go. So all of that is in the works, so I wanted to make certain that you were aware of that. Similarly, I just wanted to remind the public and each of you that there are multiple safety and security things in place that are considerably above and beyond what we can provide with our facilities. And while our facilities at times may be, it may not be perfect or exactly what we want, them combined with comprehensive plans, with trainings, with drills, with a variety of practices that we do at each of our schools, I believe, provide the best and most safest environment possible for all of our students. And we continue to do more in that arena. The reality of it is, from a facility standpoint, and from a training standpoint, much of it takes money, and so putting together a plan to help do that, as we discussed at the last meeting, we're looking at revisiting all of our lockdown, lockout drills and plans within the district in this upcoming year. It's been three or four years since we've done that uniformly as a district, so that plan is being in place. We're also taking a look at reconsideration of our threat assessment, excuse me, our vulnerability assessment that was completed in 2014 to see if there are, is a need for any updates to that by evaluating each of the buildings in the district as we did during that time. So a lot of good things are in place. Also wanted to draw your attention to a document, one of the few documents that we have on the district website. This one's titled Silver Falls School District Supports for Student Success: Prevention, Intervention, and Response. It's a multi-page report that's really a culmination of something that the administrative staff put together a few years, and it addresses a variety of things in the district. Some are so comprehensive and detailed that really we can only put titles and processes on this document, and I shared a copy with each one of you tonight, but it's a very comprehensive document. Also wanted to draw your attention to, again, just as examples only, this by no means is an exhaustive list, things like the support we provide with our partners. As an example, the Oregon Youth Line, we put brochures back there to offer students a variety of support, and parents for that matter, a variety of support related to student needs and concerns, to risks, to threats, to suicide concerns, a variety of concerns. And as you're all aware, we've put together with Jennifer's, Hannah's help, and the help of others, a series of trainings this spring that I'm very proud of, and really believe it helped define who we are as a district, putting significant attention towards student safety and attention towards student safety. I do want to comment two final thoughts. One of them is, we had some discussion, I had a discussion with the board about the potential for a safety and security forum or evening for later this spring, and while there still is some consideration for that, as an administrative team, we've begun to discuss the value of that occurring in the fall, in October, as compared to occurring in May. Some of that is due simply to logistics. It's May, and it's getting very busy, and it's hard to find a date that would work. We believe in May, people are so busy, this is based upon our experience, that many times people have a hard time, parents especially, making decisions about where it is they're going to go between baseball and track and a variety of things, and that we're concerned that the attendance in May may not be as good as the attendance in October. October is for the last, for the last three years, and our school district's safety awareness month, so it fits, and we also believe we could really do some specific planning, or excuse me, planning that would allow principals to give specific information for their schools if we were to do something uniformly in October. So that's where the conversation was left earlier today. I'm continuing that with the administrative team later this Thursday. I just wanted to give you an awareness that we may hit the pause button on trying to schedule something for this May because it just makes sense. And finally, just as a parting thought, I had the director of threat assessments for the Willamette ESD, Clem Spinner, approached me the other day, and we had a good conversation at the North Valley Youth Services Team, which I'm a member of that board, and Clem, I actually initiated the conversation by saying, "Clem, you know what we're doing in Silver Falls. Help me understand how that fits within the tri-county area." And Clem oversees all threat assessments in the Marion, Yamhill, and Polk County. And his first response to me, and I'm very pleased with his response, is he says, "Andy, you need to understand that Silver Falls School District sets a standard for the entire Willamette ESD." He was very quick to say that. He says, "You're a model school district when it comes to safety, when it comes to preparation, when it comes to response, when there are needs." He says, "The series that you put together this year, the threat assessment response, the way of handling the unfortunate and tragic deaths that we've had encountered over the last couple, a couple of years," he says, "Well, it's, nobody wants to deal with that." He says, "You have a school district that's spot on." And so I wanted to share that with you, not as anything other than creating that awareness. I believe, and I continue to be, to believe, as time progresses, that the most significant value to helping others understand the emphasis that we place on safety of our students is repeated information related to that, over and over and over again. It's like any other good messaging. People need to understand it, they need to see it, they need to see it demonstrated, and so coming from a literally third-party outside observer, who we work with Clem on occasion, but for him to say that was quite telling and made me quite proud, and hopefully he does the same across all seven of you. Anyway, there's my brief report on school safety. I wanted to make sure that you had it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
You have any questions? Okay, next up, school district grant summary from Jennifer Hannan.
Okay, Andy's going to see if he can project it so people in the audience can see what we're discussing. But you all have it in front of you, and I don't want to read through what grants, but I'll just speak briefly to what has been funded this past school year and where we are with those. So STEM, that is for training teachers in best practices in STEM instruction, library books from the Oregon Community Foundation. The M-WIT grant, that's Mid-Willamette Education Consortium, and so they are funding this school year 3D welding and a project with Scan TV. We have wellness funded by Kaiser Permanente Grant. The PE grants we continue to get, which is great, it funds PE specialists in some of our schools, and each year we think it's the last year, but we've been able to hang on for another year and another year, so that's been amazing. Okay, well, the, if you guys would like to see this in front of you, it's on the board book, yeah, so it's online. I'm sorry about that. So the high school success money, we are not to call it the CTE measure or Measure 98 anymore, it is now the High School Success Fund. So our district's portion of that is $547,000 approximately, and that's to reimburse us for qualifying expenses. And qualifying expenses would be in three areas: dropout prevention, expansion of credit, college credit opportunities in high school, and then CTE pathways for our kids. So those three areas, so there's a detailed plan that we rolled out for this school year, and you have another one coming this summer for next school year. The seismic grants, of course, are those structural upgrades from building, but as we have seen, they get, you know, new paints, new lights, new wiring, whatever, we take down, we get put back up in a beautiful and up-to-code way. And those are, you know, the bulk of our grants, three, a little over $3 million in seismic grants, and we have another one pending. The Lowe's Hardware, that funded a kitchen upgrade at Silvercrest School. The outdoor school grant, that was attached to Measure 99, and that funds qualifying expenses for outdoor school experiences for fifth and sixth graders. So qualifying means four consecutive days, does not have to be overnight, but does need to meet some criteria, criteria and be over four consecutive days. And then Marathon Kids and Let's Move Active Schools, both of those are out at Scotts Mills, and they are for physical fitness incentive programs for our kiddos at Scotts Mills. And then Perkins Grant is career and technology programs, so those CTE pathways get some support if they have computers in those pathways. The ODE New Educator Mentor Grant, that is focused, like intensive mentoring support for first and second-year teachers and administrators, trying to, that came about, I don't know, five, six years ago, in an attempt to stop the attrition of new teachers and people new to the education profession. ODE, the CTE Pathways Grant, again, that's to support those CTE pathways being in place and growing. And then the Facilities Assessment Grant and the Facilities Planning Grant, those are attached to doing the studies that we have done to look at where we need to go with facilities and growth, and you guys have been a part of those. The Maps Grant this year was written for Dylan Uselman at Butte Creek, and he used that for technology. And then a little Oktoberfest grant that Phyllis Schmidt did to repaint the Problem Solving Building Playground out there at Butte Creek. The New Oregon Hunters Association Clay Target Team Grant, they helped get the startup of that team. The Youth Transition Program Grant, that's our kiddos that we keep up to the age of 21 in our special education department. The KPI Grant is the Kindergarten Preparedness, so we qualified for that based on our kindergarten assessment out at Scotts Mills School, it's a three-year program. So that's a cool program if you have not taken a look at that. We're in year three now, but that's, they round up the parents of incoming kindergartners, they have specialists that work with the parents, while the teachers work with the kids on kind of an at-home preschool support system. It's very cool. And then the Facilities Use Agreement for the school. So a total this year that we accessed, and that was the money amount, we did have a couple of, a $2,000 and about a $1,500 equipment donation in STEM areas that are included on this. But for cash awards, we have about $4,435,599 in grants that we accessed this school year. And then we have a few pending, a seismic upgrade for the Slater Street Wing at 1.5 million, and then a couple of water and milk dispensations, and then some littler projects in the schools that are, that we haven't heard if they've been awarded or not. So that's what we have for this school year. Questions on any of those?
I have a couple of questions for you. The High School Success 98.
Yeah.
And then, I didn't... And then, I didn't know we had the Perkins and the CTE Pathways Grant.
Yeah.
Are you, are those, is that amount of money being used towards similar?
That money is a narrower focus of what you can use it on, so...
What are those focuses?
Those are exclusively in the CTE pathways.
Oh, okay, so that's no going into the 98 there.
No. Nope, it's pretty strict what you can use it on. And the Perkins is based on completers in those programs, and then the CTE pathways is to bring those programs up to industry standards.
Okay.
The CTE Pathways Grants actually started in the previous biennium, this is the third year, this is the first year for Measure 98.
Oh, thanks for that.
In that ODE New Educator Mentor Grant, was that a 50-50 split or...
No, it's funded per educator, so we can reimburse per new employee, so Mount Angel has less of it than we have, yeah.
Yeah, Jennifer, and on that same, on that same grant, maybe this is a question for Andy or Andy, but you mentioned that it's to help stop attrition, so is that just a local attrition problem, or is it just statewide, and it's trying to help teachers, new teachers get over that first two-year hump so they succeed and stick with it?
Yeah, it's really hard to be on the other side of the desk.
Yeah. When I was in high school, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think we ran one off.
Yeah.
So...
There's a, I mean, in the...
I mean, it was, I'm like, oh, poor guy, but yeah, we weren't, yeah.
Yeah, in addition to the skills of teaching, which hopefully they're coming out of their college program with, there's the navigating, the technology and the building systems, and the parent communication, and the professionalism side, and the, yeah, I mean, the classroom...
Just to get, just to help them out with that, with that learning curve.
It's a huge learning curve, that first couple of years, and if they make it past, you know, that first couple of years, then the statistics say they can stick with it. If they're gonna, it'll be in that first window. But once they kind of, you know, get enough tricks in their bag and get their feet under, they can, yeah, yeah. And that's a statewide grant, so it's not, it's not about this, the profession.
Yeah.
Yeah.
4.4 million, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very impressive...
That's an impressive number.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions about that?
No, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Okay, next up is Steve Nielsen with the financial report.
That, I think, does a great job of summarizing the grants, that some of them are talked about quite a bit and we know about, and some maybe aren't so known, and, you know, a lot of those are grants that are in the Fund 200, the special revenue funds, because they have a specific purpose, and so it's always a good reminder as to, you know, the grants that are going through there. Of course, the seismic grants, as we know, go through the Capital Projects Fund, Fund 430, but, you know, it just seems like, you know, there's some that go away, and then we get some new ones, and of course, the Measure 98 has been, been huge. And as far as the, oh, I know what I was gonna say, so the 4.4 million doesn't even include the, you know, the title IDEA, International School Lunch reimbursments, grants that we get through ODE from the federal government, so usually that's totaling somewhere between 1.5 and $2 million, so just, just so we don't forget about those. With regards to the general fund, we have the financial statement through the month of March, and we're, with three months to go, we're already at 88% of our budgeted revenue for the year, and I do expect that to eclipse 100% by the time we get to the end of June, and that is primarily because the state did fund, the state school fund this year on the 50-50 split rather than the 49-51 like they did in the two previous bienniums. We budgeted on the 49-51, of course, this being the first year of the biennium, so we're just getting some of the biennial state school fund money ahead of time, and we'll obviously have that to push forward into this next budget cycle. Expenses are right on target with the budget, all the schools are in alignment with what they planned for, so everything's looking good there. We talked about the grants and where those are folding in mostly to Fund 200 and Fund 430, there's a few small ones that go into Fund 270. You can see that in our Debt Service Fund 310, we've also received most of our property taxes there, which goes to our general obligation bond payments, and we had our December payment, and we'll have our June payment, which will bring that balance back down, so financially everything's looking good, except, of course, the Food Service Fund is still running a deficit, which we've talked about quite a bit, and that's following the same pathway we discussed before, so. And last but not least, we have our first budget meeting next Thursday, the 19th, so all the principals will be presenting to you their proposed plan for the 18, 19 school year, and I look forward to that. They're just getting them churned into me this week and start getting the notebooks assembled, so I think that's it.
Okay. Any questions, any questions for Steve? Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, to report on Victor Point and Evergreen Schools, Jamie McCarty.
Good evening. Always a pleasure to come and talk about our schools, and, you know, I feel like when the last three years, kind of come and talked about how amazing our teachers are, and how amazing our kids are, and what our schools are doing, and just kind of hit me, I'd love to show you a little bit of what our students are doing every day, their student learning, and it's phenomenal, and so we have a couple of students here today that are gonna give you a little bit of a presentation, two first graders. We have Gavin McGraw and Anna Murphy, and they're gonna, I'm gonna let Ms. Buckley talk a little bit about the three-month unit, you wanna come up and talk a little bit? But our kinders and first graders, it, I don't know if you remember when you were in kindergarten and first grade, but I do, and I remember nap, math, tonka trucks, recess, and then evolving a little bit, I, you know, kindergarten was half-day, still nap, a lot of color paste, right, or coloring, and I'll tell you what, now kindergarten, first grade is reading, writing, math, speaking, listening, doing some phenomenal things, no wonder why our kids are just flourishing under our teachers, like you talked about at the start, but our teachers are incredible. So we're here tonight to, I'll let you start a little bit, what this is about.
So we had a project that started in January, how we change and grow, and so we started with what we looked like as infants, and how much did we weigh, how long was that, and then we progressed to what do we want to be when we grow up? And so part of that involved a field trip to the high school, and we looked at what the high school students were learning about what they want to be. We went to the CTE classrooms, and we saw auto shop and woodworking, and we were excited that there were chickens there, and all kinds of things going on. Then back in our classroom, we talked about interviewing someone, and what that looked like, our speaking and listening skills. We invited my husband, Mr. Buckley, to come in in his hazmat fire outfit, and the class got to practice. I'm kindergarten first grade, so we had kindergartners and first graders that were learning to make eye contact, and ask good questions, and shake hands, and say thank you for the interview. Then they, we practiced writing notes, and how to put our ideas together in written form, and then how do we share that with others? And so for a month about, their homework was to go interview somebody, to ask those questions, to gather your information, to show details in your pictures and in your writing, and then come dressed as that person to share with the class. The rest of the class all had no paper, and they were drawing exactly what they were wearing, and copying from the board what they had written, and then writing happy faces, and yes, that's what they want to be when they grow up, or a sad face, no, they had something else in mind. And so we took some of my greatest students that are willing to come share the reports with me.
And I thought one of the coolest things was the, and we use the iPad swivel, they use the iPad swivel to take and share with the parents immediately. So, you know, parents kind of see the end work that they helped their child do for the entire time, something like that.
Yeah, as a parent, those are the best you can do.
Can you imagine a first grader out presenting that speech to a school or a group, so?
That's awesome.
You wanna start us off?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right.
I interviewed my dad. What is your job? He is a division engineer and plant supervisor. He checks people's building plans to make sure that they are safe. He drapes them like hope. If there is a mistake in the plants, he sends it back so they can fix it. There are some things that help you do your job. My dad uses a computer to look at building plans. He uses a book called the Oregon Structural Building Specialty Code to look up buildings and use the stamps to approve their work. He uses a calculator, one in coffee maker, too. The best part of his job is that he teaches people things that they don't know. He likes to help people create safe buildings that don't fall down. Do you think you would like to do this job when you grow up? Why or why not? I might be an engineer when I grow up. My dad has to figure out hard and tricky math problems, and sing hard, also because he stays very long there. That's why I'm not sure if I'm gonna be like my dad.
Good job.
Thank you.
I interviewed my Uncle Wesley. What is your job? He is a special ed teacher. What do you do at your job? He helps K through eighth grade students, finds out what they do not know, and helps them learn.
Very cool. Those your pictures? These look good.
Uncle Wesley does lots of things to help him do his job well. First, he needs other teachers to help him. Next, he uses resources like books, computers, and Google, finding a good attitude.
All right.
Uncle Wes likes lots of things about his job. The best part of his job is when his students learn what was really hard for them. Would you like to do this job when you grow up? Why or why not? I do not think I would like to do this job when I grow up, even though it is interesting. I have a different job in mind. I went to build houses, it looks like some fun.
Wow.
Okay, thanks, guys, thanks for presenting.
That was amazing.
Thanks for sharing.
Very good, thank you so much, guys.
So that's a little bit of what our kindergarten first graders are doing now these days, their penmanship, their artistic abilities, their brains, just really, really neat to watch, really neat to see and grow and develop, and, you know, already developing those speaking skills, and those things of getting up in front of classmates, and sharing, and having an opinion, and having of why you would or would not, I think that's super important. So that was a little highlight from our Evergreen School. And I'm not gonna take too much more time, but I did put together a PowerPoint for you, just our three-year tech plan at Victor Point, and our technology use at Evergreen, and how the technology in the last three years, you know, to accomplish our school goals and for our school goals this year for our SBAK and our reading and math, and how our technology shifted in the last three years is doing so much for our schools and our kids to allow us to accomplish those goals. And so three years ago, we developed a full tech plan, we didn't have an iPad, we didn't have a Chromebook, we didn't have a TV, and we kind of came together and said we're gonna put some funds together, that we gotta be competitive in our front, we gotta give our kids every opportunity to be doing what every other kid is. And so I'll let you kind of take a look through that, but it's a pretty, pretty cool feat of what both schools have done. We're one-to-one, pay-two iPads right now, we're one-to-one, three-eight Chromebooks right now, we have 64-inch flat screens in every, in every room, we have in-focus machines in every room, we have digital cameras in every room, and I put some examples of how we're using those in there, just put some A grade examples, some kindergarten examples for you to just take a look at, and also put our three-year tech plan in there that started three years ago and finishes next year, so you can kind of see our vision and how we, so we'll probably spend over $100,000 the last three years of getting there, and that's been in support, and we have a parent-teacher club member here, or secretary, or one of our Victor Point, and we have two at Evergreen here tonight, so it's fun to see, working with our PTC, working with our district, our district has helped us fund anywhere from $15 to $25 a student, so with our PTC, we all came together to make this happen, district, our district tech helped us and came to our schools and showed us where we were gonna go, and then our school, and we kind of pooled all of that to make this happen the last three years. So it's, we're really proud of it, and really proud of what our kids are doing with it, and we'd love you to just take a look through there of the work that they have done, so. Thank you.
That's great, yeah. Yeah, I really like the focus on the, and I see it in all the schools, the lower age, the public speaking, the presentation, and things like that. I know that's, that's something I didn't get when I was a young kid, and I struggled with public speaking and that up until, up until an adult, I kind of had to force myself out there. It really, I think it's gonna help a lot of kids going forward to learn to express themselves. So it's good to see that.
I just have a quick question for you. You have, you've invested a lot in technology. What about, are you still balancing that with students that are actually writing, you know, math problems, or, you know, using grid paper of any kind?
Most definitely, every day, every day.
This is awesome, but as a teacher, I'm like, how do you balance that, so?
Yeah, there's still a ton of, math, all math is on paper, pencil, and, but all of the differentiating of the instruction, like at the student's level, like one of the questions we always want to answer is, what are you doing for my kid that is at a different level than, than, you know? I think a lot of times, we have a harder time answering for our higher kids, because we have interventions in special education for our lower and middle, and our hires are left out, and I put all the programs in there that we're using to challenge our higher kids at their level, and again, I put all of our district's support that we've been given to do that, but yes, most definitely.
Yeah, Jamie, that's an amazing list of programs and stuff you guys are using.
Is this the list?
Yeah, there's a couple pages, and that's just like bare minimum, like I just tried to gather a few.
Oh, that's okay.
It's really good.
It's just good to know.
Yeah.
You know, Jamie, one thing, it's one...
You know, Jamie, one thing, it's one thing to read what's in here on the documents. But when the students come forth like that, especially at the first grade level, and share what they did is truly a gift. I mean, going back to my first grade, I think I was playing with chalk and rolling clay. You know, and the way they're able to articulate. I'm sorry, but if I never sat through another board meeting again, I would be content, based on just what I saw here. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I was going to say that too. Thank you for bringing the kids. I love it when kids come and talk to us and show us what they're doing. And that's just a perfect example of, I mean, it's unbelievable what kids are doing now at the younger, at the young ages like that. And that's a perfect example with Teacher Appreciation Week of the awesome teachers we have that are getting kids to do that stuff. It's just blows my mind.
I want to piggyback on that a little bit because I've been in Ms. Buckley's classroom a couple of years ago about this time. And what I saw there exemplified all dedication. So, thank you and all the other teachers that we work with.
That's phenomenal.
So Anna and Gavin, thank you very much. Pretty awesome.
Oh, Gavin?
Yes.
You guys are very good. Very cool.
Okay, any more questions for Jamie?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Jamie.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, next up, Wade Lockett for Silverton High School.
Think we need to be a little bit more strategic about the way we schedule this because this is going to be hard to follow. I'm going to walk out and come back next month. Well done. The difference between a first-year principal and a veteran there. Knows exactly how to play his cards. I'm going to be brief today. It's been roughly a month and a half since I spoke to you last. Not a lot of things have changed, but a few things that we just need to bring up, celebrate a few successes, give you an idea of some of the things that have been going on. As far as our current attendance is concerned, not a whole lot's changed in the last month and a half. We are a little bit lower after the changeover in the semester. I want to say right now, we're at about 12:49. I do have some specific numbers for you, but a lot of that will come through. Whether, you know, transfers, mid-year transfers, early graduations, withdrawals, some of these things do happen. Our anticipated incoming freshman class is at about 311 next year, which is pretty comparable to our other classes. With the exception of our current ninth grade class, which is at about 340. The one anomaly of all of our classes. It's roughly 30 students larger than any of our other classes, our freshman class right now. We're in the middle of forecasting for our classes for next year at this point right now. So we're trying to figure out where, what the best use of our FTE for next year is going to look like based on those numbers. Based on what our current ninth graders and future 10th graders are going to look like, where we need to shuffle some of those teachers around. So, that's currently what we are, we are in the middle of doing. Mrs. Pharaoh and I are sitting down kind of on a week-to-week basis to look at what those options are, look what our class offerings are going to be. And we believe we should have that settled within about a month at this point right now. So, so that's kind of the current kind of administrative business as far as classes offerings, teachers, FTE, these sorts of things. We don't expect to have a change in our FTE next year. We believe we're going to have the same number as far staffing is concerned. Where that staffing is at, that's the current analysis at this point. You know, that's, at the beginning of the year, we changed our RIE schedule around. And what that looked like, that was done in order to benefit our students. The very first week of that new RIE, we had about 225 students that were requested to come in for some sort of extension or intervention or remediation. This most current cycle, we had just under 400 students that were requested. And so, we believe that our teachers are starting to kind of understand the integrity of what it is we're trying to do. As far as the results, I can't give you a specific F rate right now versus what it was when we first started. But we believe that the ball is rolling right now. Our kids are being more successful through this process. It seemed like a more fluid process, I can tell you that. Thursdays, students are getting things done, teachers are getting things done in the classroom. We believe that it's, just on the surface, that it's very successful. Our kids are being more successful with the new RIE program. Jen touched on some of this stuff a little bit earlier, the new student success plan, what was once Measure 98. What we're doing with some of those dollars. And there's a few things specifically that I want to touch on. One is our dropout prevention coordinator, our dropout prevention program. We've got two ladies in the school that are kind of taking care of that program. They're checking in with about 40 students on a regular basis, going over academics, plenty of other resources and supports to help these students succeed. They are also actively pursuing a number of dropped or withdrawn students and doing what they can to help connect them to shelters, resources, other programs that they might need to be able to be successful. And they are working with around 20 students actively pursuing alternative education to be able to complete their high school degrees. Whether it be through GED or whether it's through YNMA, following through with families checking over their progress. They're continually doing these things to make sure that our students are succeeding. They're also working very closely with a handful of other senior students, their parents, their teachers, to make sure that they are successful completing their degree in Silverton High School. These two ladies are also working with two different groups, they're kind of grief counseling groups, kind of dropped in and watched this happen. It has been mentioned already tonight that there has been some, a few tragedies earlier in the year that has caused some grief throughout the school year. A number of students have been hit particularly hard with that. So these two ladies are actually actively working with kind of grief counseling groups to give these students an opportunity to deal with that grief in a healthy way. And that's been, it's been a good thing to see, I would say. It's not a fun thing to see, but it's a good thing to see. And really, they're just kind of responding to whatever the need, the building needs are at this point right now. They're doing a very good job. It's going to, I believe, a very worthwhile use of some of those dollars. Some other ways that we are using some of the Measure 98 dollars or the student success. And finding ways to create pathways for our CTE. We began a protective services program this year. It's been a real expansion of a lot of opportunities for some of our students. Kirkland Barnes, our Kirkland Barnes is spearheading that effort. At this point right now, or I guess to begin with, we anticipated about 40 students that were going to sign up for those courses. We had about 80 that were, that initially signed up for those courses. And that is fire and EMT, criminal justice. So there's a lot of things that are going on, that they are growing the Silverton Fire Score Program, they've had 10 new students there. Building internships at Silverton Police Department. They are forecasting right now for fire focus for next year. There's a lot of things going on to kind of grow that program. There are recent discussions for CTE pathways for engineering, a teacher debt program, and a culinary program as well. So what those actually look like right now, they're still in the beginning works. But we believe by the beginning of next year, we're going to have pathways for our students to be able to work into those programs. One of the things that I wanted to focus on here was our freshman class. Always kind of a good indicator, and not only that's our biggest class, but an indicator of kind of the direction we're going, the success that we're having here. At this point right now, I'm actually very proud to say that our freshman attendance for the year is hovering right at 95%. Which is pretty incredible, especially considering the fact that it's one of our goals for the strategic vision plan. As far as our freshmen on track to graduate, this is something I spent some time talking with our freshman counselor, Kevin Ortega. And he had written that, I asked him, just let me put some of here. He's right now meeting with every freshman who failed a core class for a semester. There are 24 students on that list that failed a core class for a semester. It's approximately 7% of the class. Of those 24, only six of them have more than one class to recover. Of all of those 24, he's right now trying to find a way to get them into summer school. We are creating summer school for the summer. And he believes that by the end of the summer, 100% of our freshmen will be back on track to graduate. He believes that that could be the first class and we could see they could be 100% graduation rate. And that's an exciting thing to be able to present. When you have a class that is not only that large, but also that successful at this point right now. So, you know, that was a huge success. Kind of carrying on with some of our successes. I just recently got back from the Oregon FBLA State Conference. For what is the first time in any kind of recent memory, and I don't know how far back this goes. Silverton High School has a regional state FBLA officer. Brian Sum was elected to the Atlantic Valley Region Vice President. So that is kind of a cool thing. And on top of that, I know that Jory, I mentioned a little bit earlier, but FBLA is sending seven students to nationals in the end of June. So nationals begin, are going to take place in Baltimore. I spoke with Rhian Tawley, our FBLA director. Today, we're starting to look for ways to raise money to be able to send our seven students and our five or two nationals in June. So, those are just some of the successes, some of the things that are going on right now. Again, not a whole lot's changed from a month and a half ago. And again, I do want to remain brief here and recognize the challenge of following up the students that Jamie brought in. So, I'm going to keep it brief right now. I will say that one of the major challenges, and I know that these are things that you guys do like to hear about. One of the major challenges that we're dealing with right now is really just kind of space issue. And it's not so much us. I know that Brett has brought it up as well. But it's kind of sharing that space between the middle school and high school. For us, it's athletic facilities and trying to find a way to be able to use those facilities without necessarily getting in the way of the middle school programs. He's trying to build his programs and grow his programs and we totally understand support that. I'm not the threat. Not the threat is worrying about that. We're continuing to find ways to share resources, but at the same time not to compromise program in doing so. And it is, it's a challenge for us to figure that out, but we believe, we believe it's matterless. So, let's kind of run it out right now. Any questions?
What kind of things conflict between the high school and the middle school?
Well, I think over the last decade or so, the high school maybe kind of took the ramen. But there was a facility over there that was able to use kind of our leisure. And that's just not the case anymore. Now there are students there. Some of it's time issues, whether our athletic programs are trying to get ready to warm up for practices or what have you. And there's students that are still filing out. Some of it's space with, you know, a room over there, the middle school could use a van room. And there's a room over there that we had used as a football room for a couple of years, what have you. And so we're trying to figure out the best use of that space in that facility, knowing that he needs that space. And we've got a limited need for that space as well. So, we're trying to figure out a compromise, you know, way to make that work. It's definitely a challenge for us. We're confident.
I appreciate you working with Brett on that. I was over there and visited that space. There's no easy answers.
There's none. We'll figure it out. We will figure it out. We'll come to something with it. I'm confident there's a solution.
I also want to say I appreciate your effort towards the 100, you know, keeping your eye on 100% graduation. You and Kevin and all the other staff members that are supporting students. It's awesome.
It's an exciting thing. Again, it's an exciting report. By July, in July, we can say we're up a step right there.
How do you motivate those freshmen to go to summer school? That was my one question.
We let them know. It's amazing, just the intrinsic motivation of saying, you will be on track to graduate if you do this. That's a great motivator. Kids want to graduate from high school. It's a... Yeah, it's not, sometimes there's a bad route that's given here and there, but the truth is, kids want to succeed.
That's great. You're instilling that in them and that, you know, if they're on track now, it's going to be a lot easier to get there. Whereas if they're off track, it's going to make it, it just multiplies.
Don't give yourself that hole. Even if you are, we're going out for it. And that's what we're letting them know right now. You put yourself a little bit of a hole, you're going out for it. Let's take advantage of it. Unless they're not on track. And they can do that. And they want to do that.
That's good.
As far as the middle school and high school athletics, is that for after-school athletics? Or is it, he needs room for, you know, tennis curriculum, you know, the curriculum that he has for PE?
He needs space for his programs during the day.
For his programs during the day.
And Larry said, the high school got kind of spoiled. That building was going to be theirs for a decade or so, and that's changed. So, we're trying to adjust to kind of a new normal.
So during the day? I just wanted to clarify for that.
Any of the rooms over the district office big enough to handle any of that?
As far as...
I was just thinking.
Whole district office.
At least Dan's office.
Store football helmet.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, before Wade gets too far away, I did want to let you know that he modestly mentioned the FBLA convention without mentioning one important piece of information. He attended the FBLA convention to watch our students and staff. But he was also recognized as the Administrator of the Year for the State of Oregon by the FBLA Future Business Leaders Association. As a first-year high school principal, he was given that incredible honor. So, kudos to Wade for earning that.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Okay, board reports is next. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report or share?
I guess I'll just follow up. I did visit Silverton Middle School the day before spring break. And I let Mr. Davidson just choose what he wanted to show me. And he really wanted to take me on a facilities tour. And this is the second, I went there last year about this time too. And in my mind, I wondered about a few things. And one of the things that I think that we should applaud the Silverton Middle School staff for is trying to spruce things up. They're trying to use paints and be creative about making their space theirs and welcoming. There's a beautiful mural being painted by students in the cafeteria. Is that what we call it now? Cafeteria? The old MP room. And so, a lot of great things happening by staff and students to spruce things up. Even in the sixth grade, portables, there was, I visited a classroom where the teacher was using flexible seating and lighting to make it really feel like home. I do want to say that I am concerned a little bit about long-term use of that space for the middle school. Mostly, well, two reasons. One is there's not a lot of cohesiveness between those two wings. And they're only connected by an outdoor breezeway. That's, you know, there's no hallway connecting the two parts of the building. And that makes it really difficult. And this is what I imagined, but I think Brett would be okay with me, that he confirmed that. That students don't see each other all the time and teachers don't see each other all the time. And we're trying to make a space where students want to go to school and we want them to belong and feel like they are one. And that, the way things are set up, doesn't really lend itself to that well at all. And then the other concern is safety. You know, my own child attended that school for five years before it became Silverton Middle School. I wasn't ever concerned about the condition of the building or safety, but it was confined to that one part. Now that it's in two parts, you know, we talked about the response protocols last meeting. Maybe it was in the executive session. But one of the things, the protocols is to secure the perimeter. And securing the perimeter in that campus seems... I think we could do better. Let's just put it that way. And so, we've talked about, I think, the work that the enrollment committee did. They suggested that we consider a long-term facilities process. And I just want to say that my... that my visit to Silverton Middle School, and I encourage everybody to visit to see, you know, what's going on there, because there's a lot of good things going on there. But that one piece is, is just kind of sticks out kind of as a concern piece for me, and would be a, a reason for starting a process for long-term facilities.
So, Jen, you just mentioned about the security note, Andy earlier touched on the point of access or the point of entry access systems. Are you talking about that, or are you talking about like a closed campus fencing system?
Yeah, that one, the.
Define what you're talking about.
Well, and I, I don't know if I should, how much I should say in, in public, or not in executive session, because I know that security is kind of one of those issues, but the wing, the James Street wing, by the, by the tennis courts, those two classrooms, that they, they don't have any entry into the main building, really. You have to go outside to get to them, and the fence doesn't enclose them. And Andy know that they use other parts of the campus for lunchtime activities, like they might use, do they use the tennis courts for lunchtime? So, that, those, that, that spot over there, I don't know, and, and maybe it's just because there were some events, make me feel nervous about the whole thing, because I, I was never nervous when my own, my own child was there about that. Maybe it's just more responsibility, but that just, something about that is, is feeling a little bit, like, we can do better. I, I think we can do better.
And then you mentioned long-term, define long-term?
Well, whatever we decide is long-term.
I mean, but you're talking about long-term sustainability?
I, I don't, I, I hope that we don't feel like the problem has been solved of where we're going to put our middle school kids.
So, basically, it's not a permanent solution, you're.
I, I, yeah, I, I think it, it's adequate, I think it's adequate, but I don't think we want adequate for our students.
It was never meant to be a permanent solution in the first place. I mean, we knew that going into it, it was, we didn't have a lot of choices.
Oh, yeah.
And, and. I know you understand that.
I totally do, and again.
And I think, I think our staff and administrators and Lauren's department have done, have done really well to make the best of it. We could do better, we could do more fencing, because, you know, I know they're constantly working on different things we could do. So, I, I totally agree, we can do better, but I would love to see something better where we could make that campus like it should be. So, I don't know, we need to.
Well, I think that's, I think, if I can follow up on that, I think what my thought was, was her explanation and description was more to the effect of maybe we as a group can, maybe the long-range facility idea needs to come up sooner than later. So, that was my take on it. And I know that they're doing a great job, I do, I mean, that's fine, but I, that was my, my take on it, not wait to start continuing to look at the facilities and make some action plans for our district, our whole district. Maybe that's what I got out of it.
Yeah, and I think talking to people that we talk to, community members, that we are in the same circles about their thoughts about that, is probably a good idea at this time, just to, to get a feeling for what people are thinking about.
And with Lauren, he mentioned, maybe a couple months ago, that, you know, his recommendation, his number one recommendation was to, you know, start a long-range facility plan committee, you know, sooner than later. And so, maybe that's, I'm kind of connecting those two together.
And we did just get two grants also for funding for a long-range, first of all, facility assessment.
Right.
And a long-range facility plan.
And that's the ODE Facility Assessment Grant and the ODE Facility Planning Grant? We got them. Great. Okay.
So, that's coming up relatively, I mean, when is it, when is it on the timeline?
What is that, Tom?
The long-range facilities task force, I know we've been discussing it.
Yeah, we've, the, the latest, most recent conversation is that we would initiate that in the 18, 19 school year, that, that was the last board conversation we had.
You have until December 31st, 2019, to.
To use those.
To get this process and use those dollars specifically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Jennifer, I agree with your assessment of facilities. It's, it functions, we can do better.
Thanks, I agree too.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay, correspondence. I know we got, we, we got some input from Sarah Weitzman on some policy, I can't remember, was there any other correspondence?
I haven't received any, and thank you, Tim, for forwarding that email to me, because I hadn't received that, I appreciate that.
Okay, so we all got that. Okay, so now is the time for the second audience with visitors, and they will be limited to discussion and action items.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth Neves, and I live at 408 Lone Oaks Loop. And I just wanted to, not complaining. I just wanted to express some appreciation for the training series that was set up. I was privileged to attend two out of four, and they were along the lines of a subject matter expert series. So, it was really beneficial for the community. They could have been a little bit, I feel, better advertised. There was one in particular which I really wanted to go to, but it didn't have a time and a place yet, and I think a lot of us missed it accidentally. So, I really want to put a plug in for doing it again. I'm hoping that it can be a yearly series, because community members, parents, the response was really positive, and people asked questions, really good questions. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the beefing up of the teacher trainings. I noticed that, I heard about that, and that really tied into something that was brought up earlier, which was the retention and attrition. As you were reading off all of the grants that are happening, that's so exciting, and I heard the mentor, the teacher mentor grant, so I'm hoping that that will also be a position or positions that are going to be funded for a while, maybe a few years. Okay, good. Also, with attrition and retention, I know that some months ago, we were talking about exit interviews. Has anything come up around exit interviews?
We do a sampling of exit interviews with, with our staff.
Oh, so, not more like a, a formal process? Just kind of a sample? Okay, well, maybe that's something to think about. Yeah. But I sure appreciated all of the subject matter series, and I'm hoping that those will happen again. That's it. Thank you. Oh, and will they be put on video or summarized in some way?
A couple are, a couple that we were not allowed to, we were legally restricted from placing them on public viewing, but I believe those that were captured will be placed on the, on YouTube or on Vimeo, on the website.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing them, we'll move on. Next is our, we got three action items for the night, for tonight. The third one's very self-explanatory, but the first two, they're a, they're just kind of a, they're, to take care of just, just some bookkeeping. Oregon law allowed charter schools to serve, to pay for services from OSBA directly, and they changed the law, so now, the char, these are proposing to have the charter schools pay us, and then we'll pay OSBA. So, mainly, they're just boilerplate, so, but if, if, we need any more clarification, I'm kind of explaining that for the, for the, for the viewers, and if there's any more clarification, we can take care of it in discussion, I suppose. So, anyway, for action item number A, to approve a memorandum of understanding between Silver Falls School District and Community Ritz Charter School regarding services provided by the Oregon School Board Association, effective July 1, 2018. Do I have a motion for approval?
A motion for approval?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Okay.
So, on the action item that we're doing, was it, let's see, as a result of a recent change of incorporation status by the OSBA, charter schools will no longer be able to contract for policy service directly with OSBA. So, it wasn't, it wasn't a legislation that was passed, it was OSBA, and according to becoming an incorporation, let's see, of incorporation status. I just want to make sure that it's understood.
I think it was, I think it was a change of OSBA, I think they changed the way they were structured.
They were structured, right. And therefore, they can't have charter schools.
Something like that.
Yeah, okay. All right, that sounds good. Yeah, okay, thank you, I was just reading the, the summary here. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, action item number B, letter B, approved memorandum of understanding between Silver Falls School District and Bethany Charter School regarding services provided by the Oregon School Boards Association, effective July 1, 2018. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and third action item is to approve Andy Metcalf Construction Company of Salem, Oregon as the general contractor for the Robert Frost School Seismic Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $230,000 and, $230,022. State, this is all funded from state grants.
240, Mr. Chairman.
Did you remember?
It says 230.
I got $230,022.
I'm sorry, in the agenda is what it says, so that should be, I'm just looking at the summary page.
Oh, okay.
There's an alternate that's in there, that, that is going to be put in there currently, but it's about $9,000. Basically, paint the ceiling complete from the gymnasium.
Okay.
So, they're going to do work in spots.
Okay.
So, it's not going to look right. That was an alternate that he's put in there.
Okay, so it's.
Then our, our budget.
Okay. Okay, so what's the, what's the grant?
So, the board, the board only needs to take action on the 230. Clarification, Lauren, so yeah, it's, it's correct in the agenda, and then if we were to accept the alternate, the district has authority to do that, as long as you approve the 230,000.
Got it, okay. Okay, so the, so the amount is $230,022 of state, state, state grants. Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
Approved.
Oh, already did, discussion, all right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, that's the last item on the agenda, do we have any further business? Okay, seeing them, meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you.